Call the meeting of the county council's order. November the 28th, it's 9:01 a.m. will be led to the by. To the pledge allegiance to the flag by Mr. John Burks. Thank you, Mr. President. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, has the agenda been posted properly?
Yes.
Anyone have a question about the agenda? Roll call please. Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Here.
Ms. Chambers?
Present.
Ms. Lassiter?
Here.
Mr. Magic?
Present.
Ms. Piper?
Here.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Here.
Now I need a motion to approve the minutes of the October 24th meeting.
Second.
By Larry, second by Jessica. Roll call please. Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Magic?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Quickenbush?
Yes.
Now I need a motion to approve the minutes of the 2018 budget hearings. So move. Move by Scott.
Second.
Second by Jane. Roll call please. Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Excuse me. Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Magic?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Yes.
It will move on to the approval of financial and transfer agenda, start with financial agenda.
Okay. Circuit Court, 397, petted jurors, 20,000, total request 20,000. But she's amended that to 13,500 so far.
Hi, Emily Anderson, court administrator, I'm going to amend that again to $4,500. We had more trials get canceled, they've let out, so.
Any questions of the council?
Need a motion to approve that?
Yes.
Motion to approve that with the change to $4,500.
Scott?
Second.
Second, Larry. Now, any questions? I'd like to commend Emily, she called me a couple of weeks ago pleading her case, said, "I know, we're trying not to appropriate new money." So that's the reason, it was 20,000 then, she had no idea how many cases would come to court, but she knew how many could. So we discussed it, and she agreed to amend it at the finance committee meeting if new information was available, and as you can see, it's even changed now to today. So appreciate your work with us.
Yes, and like I discussed at finance, this money will stay there, if we don't use it for jury trials, it's going to go back into county general. We still have 1,500 in grand jury fees, I just don't want to touch that, because last year we had one at the end of November. So we never know if we're going to get a grand jury. So if we get no, if we don't have any grand jury, I'll use that 1,500 before I use this. If I don't use a grand jury, that'll go back into the county general. So this money will not be used for anything but the jury. And if it doesn't get used, it'll go right back into county general.
Good. Roll call please. Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sheriff, 192, educational incentive pay, 39,000, total request 39,000.
Is there a motion? Motion approved?
Second.
Motion by Chris, second by Larry. No discussion?
Yeah, there was some discussion in finance committee that the sheriff go back and try to find this in his budget. And I've got some other questions too, if he's available, there he is.
Don't sit down.
We're on you guys.
That's constant.
I don't think he heard the question.
Sure did.
No, I don't know if we got to the question, Rod, anyway. We had talked about in finance committee about having you go back to your budget and see if there wasn't some relief that you can find out of your budget.
I already did.
Pay this 39,000.
I'll get you one too.
Okay.
Can you three share one?
Yep.
Well, that's what we got, yeah. Sheriff?
Thank you.
Everybody has one of those.
Okay. All right, well, then do the next one there.
Well, just for point of information, put it in the minutes. The commissioner's attorney supplied us with the roster of those that are eligible for this program at this time.
She's right here. Gail. About 5,000.
Now, this is, they worked on this after the committee, so we get an extra question from them, but the only question that came up in the committee was, they only had asked us for the chair project. Yeah, yeah, we closed up.
On this list, Sheriff, this is a list of dollars you found that you could transfer, is that correct? Correct. So you didn't read, Jerry?
That's just for the jail side.
Oh, this is the jail side, okay.
The sheriff's side is at the top, it is 10,500. So it gets a lot of state.
So they're still short.
Okay, well, the jail side isn't that high, is it?
No.
So you won't be...
It's only 9,600.
That's what I thought. And the sheriff's side goes 29,4?
Yes.
This is over 70 years. Okay, we have 4,474,94 in the council's budget for salary adjustments. And I would suggest we add that to your 10,5991 as a transfer.
Okay, it's a major transfer, has to be advertised.
Oh, it does?
Has to go to the state.
Okay. Okay. So we can do that.
Sheriff, did John talk to you about the one, there was one here that hasn't been verified yet?
Yeah, I mean, that's what I discussed with him.
Okay, is that one that's going to be reduced off of that 10, or did you already figure that in?
It's already, we figured it in.
Okay.
So if that ain't verified, it's...
Say that again.
It'll be taken off. But it's from the jail side, so we came up with all that.
Right, okay, all right, all right. I appreciate you going to work on this.
Well, I'd still suggest if we have to, we'll have a special meeting to appropriate that 4,474 if the council needs.
Give me that total again, 4,000, huh?
4,474, 94, we shot for 94.
I would be in favor of doing that. And I don't, I had a question too, and I don't know if the question is for you guys or for Donna or both, but the request was made solely out of the sheriff's budget for the additional appropriation, should there not be a request made for the jail?
When it was submitted to me, it was all combined.
Well, they're going to transfer that jail stuff anyway, so it's moved.
Oh, yeah, okay, all right.
So we can take the 4,400 off of your 11,000 short, and that will tell us how much you're still short, is that correct, Sheriff? That's correct. 6,605. Right, Donna?
I'm sorry. He was asking if that number was right? I don't have on your sheets from here.
Oh, this?
Oh, you've got it here.
Somebody want a number for us?
I just hear the question, I'm sorry.
Well, the question is, is if you add 10, 9, 51, and 40,74, subtract that from...
Well, actually, if you take what they're still short...
29,4.
Above 079.
Short, 11,079. 6605.
Okay, well, you can do it that way too, same difference. What's that number?
6,605.
6,605, okay, so the question is, Chris and Larry, are you willing to amend your motion to the new appropriation of 6,605 with the stipulation that the council will hold a special meeting and transfer the 4,474?
Okay, can I say something?
You may.
Okay. Gail and I don't really know why we would have to transfer, it's a salary adjustment. We both think it could be paid directly out of the council's line item salary adjustment. She's going to have to come up with so many people to meet that figure.
Oh, that's okay.
And then, my problem is this was all advertised as sheriff, and we're paying jail people. So we're going to do these transfers.
We're not going to pay the jail people, they're going to transfer, they've got more than enough to transfer.
Right, but she needs the rest of that, she needs the rest of the jail money in order to pay the merit guys. And so if you look on her breakdown sheet, page 3, down to where she's gotten red, the 96,655, okay. That covers all the jail people. The money below that line, she needs to use to pay merit people.
Okay, so we're going to pay some of them out of salary adjustment, and the rest of them out of 6605 appropriation?
No. Well, yes and no. You're going to use your 4,400, you're going to give them appropriation of 6,000 for the sheriff, but she still needs everything below this red line in the jail to pay the sheriff employees.
That's why when I ask for the number... Just do it.
Donna, if we appropriate the 6600, can you guys figure out how?
But I'm saying, they're using this jail money to pay sheriff merit people. She's got to have the rest of this jail money in order to pay her sheriff merit people.
So you have to be transferred to the sheriff's side.
We need 13,335 appropriated today to cover the sheriffs. That's taking the 60, the 29,4, and 15,065, which is what we've got from transfers into sheriff, money from the council's salary adjustments is 15,065. You take that from the 29,4, and you're going to get 13,335. And that's what our appropriation needs to be today, and then they're going to take care of the jail people, the forensic officers out of transfers. So we need to amend your motion again from 6605 to 13,335.
Isn't there more than enough in the jail side that...
There is, but we can't use it to pay for the sheriff's. Is that correct?
I'm just saying, if you in order to use this jail money for the sheriff merit people, it needs to be transferred. That's a major transfer.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we can't do that today. But if we just appropriate, and you know, Sheriff, I've been pretty adamant about trying to work either you or the commissioners into covering this, and I appreciate what you've done today, and that's why I'm proposing that we go ahead and work with him and appropriate 13,335 instead of 39,000.
Yes, sir.
And that'll cover what you need.
And what's on that?
As long as Gail can pay out salary adjustment directly into these fees.
Okay, amend my motion to 13,335? 13,395?
I'll second.
Okay, wait a minute.
Don't, don't.
I thought you said 13,335.
Well, that was my man. That's 15,065 subtracting 29,4.
Well, give me the amount.
We know that we need 6,605.
No, that number's wrong. That 6,000 number is wrong.
Why?
Because they ain't worth that.
Okay, from the red line down on the jail, if I had it to separate, I get 7,665. So you would need to appropriate that plus...
I'm going to double check my figure. What did you come up with?
I come up with 7,665. I did it twice. From the red line down.
I can't agree with that.
And they were shorting that in fact?
No, they turned in a list here of transfers from the jail budget of 17,330, and they only need 9,600. And you're saying it takes a major transfer to use the balance between 17,330 and 9,600? We can't do a major transfer today.
I don't know, I don't know.
So the way I see it, the sheriff has submitted a proposal that he has more than enough money to cover the 9,600 in the jail.
Right.
Okay, so we can't use that for anything else.
I understand that, that's why I'm trying to tell you.
Then we have 29,4 needed to pay the incentives, what we'll call delinquent incentives. We need 29,4. The sheriff has submitted transfers of 10,591. We have a suggestion to use 4,474 out of council, that's 15,065. You take that from the 29,4, and you get 13,335. I don't know how you can include any other way.
4,000 what?
4,74.
I'll throw in 6 cents, we all make a 4,75.
Well, I guess my left hand map is looking at it, that he was short 11,079. That's what he is short after his transfers. And if we give him the 4,000, 4,74, we're off salary adjustment, that leaves 6,605. And so somewhere, that's where the council, I mean, that's the figure that the council should...
You can't use that 17,000 number because you can't use that money to transfer to the deputies.
Are you saying transferring it next month, Jane, is that what your friend is?
I'm just saying that all the council needs to appropriate is the 6,605, and then we need to figure out how to get it in what budgets. Because we know what you're short, we know what you're giving, we're giving you out of the adjustments. So we know how much we're still short, which is 6,604. I get 14,335, so you guys totally lost me.
So where do you get that?
All my math.
Okay, he needs 29,400 for the merit employees, right?
She's right.
Okay, if you take the 10,591 that he says he can transfer, you minus that, you minus the 4,474, is that right?
14,335 is over.
I get 14,335. I don't know where...
Well, I was doing longhand, I messed it up.
Then, in the jail budget, he's got plenty of money to transfer to cover the jail employees.
No, I wouldn't.
The red line above covers all the jail employees. The rest of that money can just revert back to county general at the end of the year if they don't spend it. So in my eyes, you need to appropriate 14,335.
I agree.
You're taking 14,335?
Uh-huh.
Will you agree to let that balance in that transfer revert back then in the jail? To cover the difference between the 14,335 and 6605?
And that's the jail money that I gave up?
Yeah, the 17,330 you're not going to use at all. Will you let the rest of that revert back? That'll wash that right out, and it'll be back at 6605.
Okay, so today you need to approve additional appropriation, 14,335. Then you need to approve, excuse me, you need to approve the sheriff a transfer to, Larry, can I have that budget again, please? Gail? See, next year it's in low, so that's totally, but I get 192. Because 192 won't buy you, right? Okay. So, okay, the sheriff will transfer to account 192. And the jail... Okay, so in the jail budget, we'll do the transfer into an account 192. I was trying to make sure that we had open accounts the same. And we'll call them education incentive. So you got three things to do, just an appropriation, two transfers.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
And I'll give you the total of the streets.
To approve a corrected amount 14,335.
Correct, yes.
That's our new, that's Chris and Larry
I was okay with that.
Have amended the original motion to include an amount of 14,335. Anybody else have a question? Roll call please. Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter? Mr. Quickenbush?
Yes.
Now, we need a motion to transfer monies as listed in the sheriff's budget, 10,591 as presented by the sheriff from various accounts to educational incentive pay 192. So move.
Second.
Motion by Larry, second by Chris. Questions? Roll call. Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Magic?
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Yes.
Now, I need a motion to transfer 17,330 from various accounts as presented by the sheriff
Sit down.
Into...
No, 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 no. You need to, you're transferring 9,665 down to the red line, that's all she needs, right Maggie?
That's all we need to do right now?
Right Maggie?
On the jail side?
Yes. You just need it down to the red line.
Okay.
9,665.
I'm just going to transfer...
My only 9,600.
Pay down the 9,600. Donna?
65 dollars left down to that one.
Yeah, just to be easier, go ahead and transfer it, leave the 96 dollars in that account.
My goal was to change that all over into the incentive plan, and then at the end of the year, we drop off into the general fund.
Oh, go ahead and put the whole amount in there so they won't use it, well, that's fine too.
I'm trying to do it quietly.
That's okay.
Didn't work.
That's fine.
So, my...
You can do that.
I would send a motion to transfer seventeen thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars from various line items in the jail budget to the educational incentive. So, move. Second. Okay, we got two or three here. Who'd I hear? You moved?
I moved.
Scott? Jessica?
Chris, you beat me.
Okay. Well, I already had one, but I'll change it. I got two motions and two seconds. Good to go. Anybody else got anything to say about this? Any questions?
Thank you, Sheriff and Maggie.
Thanks for going to work on that.
And for the audience's understanding, this has not been easy. We've been debating this since budget time. And I appreciate everybody's help, including Mr. Brooke, who has been negotiating the whole thing, and he's kept me up to speed on it. And I knew that sooner or later, we would face the issue, and we did today. And I appreciate everybody's cooperation. Thank you very much.
Okay. I have a question.
I need a roll call. One more question?
After you vote. I've got a question for Lily.
Okay. Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Yes.
They're gone.
Okay. Never mind, answering one question.
Thank you.
We did.
No, I don't want to do this again. We need to move along to the auditor's request here.
Okay. Auditor, three twenty-two postage, two thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-two cents. Total request, two thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-two cents.
Move to approve?
Second.
Move by Scott, second by Jessica. Any questions? Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Yes.
Edit, three hundred edit projects, that should say three million, total request, three million.
Anybody here from the commissioners?
It's pretty much mine.
Okay, Dawn, you go ahead.
Motion to approve.
Second. On by Jane, second by Larry.
I mean, we usually do this together, but this is just a pay edit project. I'm down to, I can just make my bond payments today and nothing else. I'd want to spend down to where I can not go below, so I can make my bond payment. And after that, I'm out of appropriation. So, I can't pay any more bills unless I get their appropriation. And this carries over.
Into the next year.
Yeah, because it's projects, I can recover the balance, so it won't be coming back in January, starting over again.
She anticipates revenue needed to fulfill what's been approved in a period of time. Back several years ago, edit, the edit board would come in and try to appropriate the whole edit budget. And council kind of stood firm on that, so...
Yeah, I'll be back next year.
The reason we do this in intervals now is so there is something we'd like to discuss. We have the opportunity to. That's what this is. Roll call, please. Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Yes.
Casa Jcat Pilot Project Fund, one ninety-seven part-time, eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars. One ninety-eight part-time, twenty thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars. FICA, one thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars. Total request, thirty thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars.
Move to approve?
Donna, read that FICA again.
Two thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars.
A motion by Scott. Second. Second by Larry.
Maggie.
Questions? I've got to tease you a little bit.
Oh, yeah?
Because I was so adamant about you hitting the dog. I'll get the cat.
No. No cats, not this year.
It says big cat on there.
Right? Wrong cat.
Roll call, please.
Thank you.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Yes.
Commission of Tourism, one seventy-one group healthcare insurance, twenty-six thousand. Total request, twenty-six thousand.
Move to approve. Move by Larry.
Second.
Second by Scott. Questions? Roll call. Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Yes.
Thank you.
EMS capital improvement, four forty-two pound cut, fourteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars. One ninety-six overtime, sixty thousand dollars. Two twenty-one gasoline, twelve thousand dollars. Total request, eighty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Motion? Page to approve. Move by Larry.
Second.
Second by Magic, Chris Magic, thank you. I'm going to try my best here to eliminate some discussion on this. We had a kind of a long discussion at the finance committee, and finance committee made no recommendation. And I was a little, I've always been kind of adamant about the fact that the title of this line item was EMS capital improvements. And this Donna, she had to straighten me out a little bit after the meeting. She pulled the ordinance. I want to read you a line in the ordinance. EMS capital improvement fund, non-reverting fund to establish better emergency medical services, coverages stations, fleets, equipment, and other needs and expenses. So, that kind of blows me out of the water when saying, I interpreted capital improvements as being major purchases, but there's this disclaimer in here that just about says you can use it for anything you want to. I personally disagree with it, but it's in the ordinance. And I would also like to point out something else, too, that I noticed. I think Mr. Bledsoe's name's in this ordinance, so you probably remember it. But the ordinance says, whereas this ordinance will require the approval of both the county commissioners and the county council to enact all the changes necessary for the improvement of emergency medical services. I don't recall the council ever approving this ordinance. I've talked to Mr. Hughes about that, and he says I'll be a little nitpicky there.
Was the date on that wrong? I mean, was that maybe set up for the...
It was...
It's for all his different funds.
Well, I know, but when we moved EMS, I know we used...
It was seventeen November, twenty fourteen. You made changes...
You better remember if you can remember anything about that. I remember something.
Do you have the...
Not a grocery register.
I have the ordinance right here.
It's when you like increase just fees, you know? Every once in a while, you guys would go in and increase fees, give him a new one, that.
At the time, I was kind of protesting some of those increases and didn't catch the part about the use of capital improvement money, but when I reread it, as Donna stuck it in my...
I know we utilize that fund a lot when we transform it to 911, and I think that we might best do some cleanup.
I thought Jason Penn was a poor counselor.
Well, it's up to the council as to what else you want to discuss. I need a motion to approve this item, I guess.
Is it used for salaries? When used for salaries?
It says right here, and other needs and expenses. That's a blank check, in my opinion.
Because I don't look at capital improvement as salaries.
It's never been used for salaries. It's been used when overtime is underfunded. It's been used to supply overtime. It's been used to purchase buildings. It's been used to purchase vehicles. It's also been used, and there's been money taken out of it to put a roof on this building, a roof on the jail, I think. I mean, there's all kinds of things that it ends up getting used for. But the idea is that we have money to put back into EMS because it does generate some money. So, point being, here we've got a shortfall of overtime. We've used the overtime replacement, which is what we bill people when they ask for a specific truck to come out. Half of that money goes to the general fund, half of that money goes into our replacement. And I don't want to get into a debate about salaries and all that sort of stuff, but I'm losing people, and we're paying more overtime because we're not paying a competitive wage.
There was, I think, in the finance meeting, there was some question on whether or not this could be done because it was capital improvements. I think we've solved that as to where that can be done. There was also some discussion on the amount of overtime and whether or not that can be reduced.
No.
And if he doesn't spend it, it'll revert, I mean, it'll stay in that fund.
It'll revert, so...
But you guys cut him fifty thousand.
You asked for overtime here while back, and you said you'd be back... I thought it was, the number was sixty thousand.
I looked back and felt, okay. I did, I ran the numbers for the last ten years. And of those ten years, nine of them, I've had to come back and ask for overtime. And if you want to know those amounts, I got them.
No, I know, back about three months ago, you transferred for overtime and said you probably had to come back. It might have been for whatever it was.
It was. We transferred all the part-time money
back into...
back into overtime.
Right, we knew we'd need it. Donna just pointed out to me, in twenty-seventeen budget, we cut the overtime fifty thousand there, so that almost makes up for the difference.
You cut it in fourteen as well and in twelve. And I came back and asked for money in both years.
His original request, you cut, you cut by fifty thousand. And next year, you did give him a little more for eighteen, but you still cut his request.
We cut it fifteen. We cut it fifteen for next year.
So, it's not going to be as bad next year, hopefully.
I know the number two eighty will get me there. That's what I always ask for.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I have Larry and Chris on it. Ready to vote? Roll call, please. Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Magic?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush? Yes. And I want to thank Donna for helping me out on that. And we did even have a letter, she had a letter where we did this before saying that we weren't going to make it happen. But...
But I think that was last year, because last year or the year before.
Yeah, I can't remember, because I can't find the one.
It's one of those situations where I can't predict the overtime. I mean, it's like trying to predict our gasoline budget. What's gas going to be December or November of two thousand nineteen? I can't tell you. But I'm trying to forecast it for a year in advance. So, I know that the two eighty number's a lot, and I know we cut it every year, but we always come back, and we've got to find the money someplace to use it. So, this will slow us down in vehicle replacements because we're due to buy or purchase a new truck and re-chassis a truck. And I know that this will slow us down a little bit. We're also looking at the wear and tear of the fleet. The new power cot is going to be a change. Hopefully, we can ease those in, just like I talk about the radios are, you know, three, four thousand dollars apiece. The new ambulances, all new ambulances are going to come with a power load system, and that adds forty thousand dollars to the new price of a new ambulance. And there's just nothing I can do about it.
It's a lift gate?
It's not, it's essentially a lift gate. It's trying to save wear and tear on employees. The new cot we're purchasing is, will raise and lower itself. It's got essentially a battery in it. And what happens is with the load system, a disc comes out of the back of the truck, it hooks onto the cot. The wheels go up, and the paramedic will raise the wheels, and then it all slides itself into the back of the ambulance, so we don't have to pick up as many people. The idea is, and Indiana is one of the few states left that has not mandated it yet, but we feel, and the manufacturers feel that it's coming because I think like forty-six to forty-seven states have mandated it for all new purchases starting last year.
But your office manager, an apology to her, what's her phone number?
Seven four seven, seven seven nine zero. And I told her you were going to call yesterday. I almost text you.
I was working on some other stuff yesterday.
I understand.
Ask Scott. Scott, I was on the phone four times.
And I know, and I know you worked diligently, but having this, Ron and I had a discussion Friday about this, and it really got me looking into some things, and why we're spending overtime. And it really has to do with maintaining our personnel. I lost two people yesterday. And I can't understand, why am I losing these paramedics? Well, then, so Friday, I started looking into some of the other places. Literally, from Indiana to Florida, everybody's hiring. Sunstar, Lauren County, Century, AMR, all offer a five thousand dollar sign-on bonus, plus relocation fees, plus benefits, plus education fee. I mean, everybody is making it difficult to get really good people. Lifeline is offering a ten thousand dollar sign-on fee if you sign on before December first. I mean, I can't compete with that. So, I'm going to continue to pay overtime because I'm not going to be able to keep people. One of my employees that left yesterday has worked here five days. He got a better job. It offers more money, less hours, fewer calls, and I can't compete with that.
Jason, when we made those cuts to overtime, I think, refresh my memory, did we add some personnel?
Well, we added some part-time people, but the problem is, I can't, I can't give people time. Well, with the union contract, I can't supplant part-time people for full-time people. So, what it does is, it took some, it alleviated some of the problem in me forcing the same people to work all the time. We put the part-time people into the mix. So, instead of you and Mary having to switch every other day, working an extra twenty-four hour shift, we brought a third person in and offered them that time. The problem is, is with being down between three and five people, we burned through that so fast that we're out of overtime money. And now, now I can't, we've moved the part-time money to help the overtime budget, which is where it came from. I can't, I can't use the overtime people to work now because we're out of money, and I'm still trying to hire people.
I just didn't remember making those straight-up cuts without some kind of trade-off plan.
Yeah, and I mean, it's kind of any port of storm, where, you know, I'm trying, I'm trying to take some of the the alleviation of the stress. I mean, these guys work from eight AM to eight AM. They're taking sixty, averaging sixty-two calls a day. We're killing them. And I'll argue to say that they're the hardest-working employees at the county, physically, mentally, and emotionally. You'd be sick to your stomach if you had to see what they see every day. And I welcome every one of you to come, come ride with them, see what it's like. Jessica knows what I'm doing.
Probably Melanie already has. The, I had to bring this up.
Bring it.
The deal with the city, what is, how is that going to affect us and our budgets and our service and its service to the public?
At this point, it's too difficult to forgive. I can tell you that legally, if the city wants to start an EMS... I can tell you that legally, if the city wants to start an EMS service, or if the city wants to use and pay for a private service to take their 911 calls, they have the authority and jurisdiction to do that through Indiana State Statute. But they don't have the authority to go anyplace outside the city that they're not contracted to go. We would still have to provide an EMS service. What that looks like, the commissioners have asked me to put together some different plans, and that is something that we continue to work on. And I don't have a solid answer for what that number is because we still have to protect all of the towns and all of the unincorporated areas outside of the city if that takes place. Now, is that a reduction in staff? I don't know. Probably so. Is it a reduction in service? I don't know that it can be. When you look at statistically the people that pay their bill, the majority of those paying the majority of the bills, and you look at who has insurance and who doesn't, it draws a pretty good boundary line. So, those are all things that we're looking at. I don't know what that reduction in force would be. My employees are obviously, and that's a detriment to me bringing in new employees. I've been asking the employees, how long am I going to work here? So, and I don't have that answer. So, we're trying to be prepared for that. But with the inability and the uncertainty of that forecast, I can only continue to operate and try to build on what we've been doing for forty years.
What is the timeframe on that? There is none?
There is none. I can tell you that we've looked into the top two hundred cities that provide Firebase EMS. And I can also tell you that we were quite surprised in some of the things that we found. I can also tell you that I was also quite surprised in some of the contracts that I looked at where jurisdictions have brought in private services such as AMR. They're one of the largest in the country. And typically, there are assurances from jurisdictions that they'll get a hundred percent of the market. Now, if that's the case, then you're looking at the city not only affecting Delaware EMS, but private services like Eaton, Heartland, IU. I mean, everybody's going to be affected. So, the flip side of that coin is, there really is a lot of money in 911. It costs as much or more to run 911 as it does the private service. Otherwise, there wouldn't be private services making out there for profit. So, knowing that the money's not there, a lot of these jurisdictions pay a stipend to those private services. I don't know that the city wants to pay for EMS coverage. Why would they? They get it for free now. It's all county tax dollars. The city pays no extra money for EMS coverage. So, that doesn't behoove them. And if their motivation is money, we've looked at the numbers. When Mr. Bledsoe was commissioner, we tried to explain it to him once before. I know Mr. Hudson did it years before I. I had a public records request from the city council, and we gave them all the last, I think, the last ten or fifteen years' worth of numbers.
Yes, been ongoing discussions for many, many years. I mean, it's, I do have confidence, though, in both sides. Whatever does happen, that the level of care and service will always be there. I think with the leadership that I see here and what we've had, and our people that have been there and remain on will make sure that it works regardless. So the people won't have to worry about it. It'll be a financial burden on maybe more than one person now. But again, it's always been about the numbers and thinking that it was a money-making machine, when in fact, again, it's a service, is what it is. And it's, we barely break even, what, thirty thousand dollars?
Yeah, and it fluctuates.
It fluctuates. I mean, so that, it's a lot of headache for thirty thousand dollars. But it's a good level of service that we provide. And I still feel comfortable that even in the unincorporated areas, that people won't even be concerned about not having an ambulance. And they're good qualified folks.
Well, I think that's the area that you guys are going to cover. We know we're going to have good service in those areas.
Absolutely.
I think the question's going to be in City Muncie, and that's for them to deal with, I guess.
And that's all, I mean, that's all we can do. We can't speculate what they're going to do. How they bring in a private service that pays minimum wage is, you know, how's that the answer? I don't know.
You know, and we've talked about this over the years, too, and I don't want to drag this out, but, you know, we've always been concerned about the employees pulling those type number of calls in a twenty-four hour period because of the stuff that they do see and deal with, and you're talking about people loading and trying to, you're talking about loading an ambulance. You're not talking about transporting them from wherever they're at into an ambulance. There's a lot of things, there are a lot of time goes into this. And being out on an emergency call of any nature, you know, is a great deal of resource. And when you work people like that, and they can go somewhere and make more money with less time and more time with their families, they're going to go.
Yeah.
So, there needs to be something, you know, at some point. We need to look at how we take care of those people and what we need to do to change with those times. But you only have two hundred and sixty thousand dollars worth of money to try to do that. If you look at the overtime. It's a problem no matter what happens, trying to retain people at any public service. At this point, there's no pay raises.
There's two things, though, that some don't probably totally understand. They work a twenty-four hour shift. Eight hours of that is time and a half. Correct? It's overtime.
You can't break it down that way. Once they work forty hours, when you pay Tuesday to Tuesday, once they work past those forty hours, then that time is time and a half.
But that's their regular pay only, it's time and a half. It's not like they're filling in for somebody else.
That is correct, and that's half-time added to their regular pay.
Okay. So it's still part of their regular salary.
But it comes out of the overtime budget.
Overtime comes up and shows up.
Because it's-
Right.
But we're paying sixty-six percent of the time out of somebody because we don't have a body in the city.
Well, and to sort of emphasize Larry's comments, and I hate to do this because I get jammed every time I do. In 1981, the EMS is three years old. In 1978, it was a used morticians ambulance, if you want to call it that. A urged. And when I came in office in 1981, the ambulance service was housed in the old I and M garage down here on High Street. We didn't have paramedics. It was a big issue on the political ballot, whether you wanted paramedics. I was convinced that we needed paramedics. And I took the role of having paramedics on. And I'm going to brag a little bit about that. And it really bugs me when somebody wants to start dismantling something that's been built. After I left, people like Larry were there, and other commissioners have kept building this program so that this county has what you would call an admirable and very spatial service to our community. And it just bugs me to death to think that anyone would criticize that. When Jason Rogers applied for the job he has right now, you can ask him. He took the time when he was asked to sit down with myself and Rick Spangler and take a pretty good discussion about where he would go with this. But we wanted quality service, and we wanted quality people. And we've tried our best to keep those wages in conjunction with others. And for years, we were pretty good. But I didn't know we were fighting bonuses and that kind of thing. But to fight that, and then the turmoil of someone wanting to break up the service, just, I think it's-
It's prickly.
To use a big word, it's asinine. Period. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your information with us.
Did we vote on this?
As things progress, and we have something we're solid, I'll be reaching out.
We voted on that one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, EMS overtime replacement, one seventy-one FICA, nine hundred and thirty dollars. Total request, nine hundred and thirty dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion to approve with Scott, second by Jessica. Any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Madschek?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Yes.
Ms. Domenant, two forty-one. Supplies, five thousand. Four forty-one equipment, forty thousand. Total request, forty-five thousand.
Move to approve.
Second.
Who was that? Scott?
Yeah.
Third, Larry. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Madschek?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Yes.
Juvenile DUI, Operation Pullover, one oh one salaries, nine thousand. Total request, nine thousand.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second by Scott, second by Jessica. Questions? Roll call.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Madschek?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Yes.
Rainy Day, three ten. Interest on tax warrants, forty thousand. Total request, forty thousand.
Move to approve. Second.
Second by Jessica, second by Jane. Questions? Want to explain that dollar, please?
Yes. This is the interest that I have to pay on my tax warrant. And I just, I took forty thousand because I don't know what it's going to be. But last year, I paid thirty-two thousand seven hundred and ninety, or thirty-two thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-four cents. So, when this gets approved, I'm going to call the bank and ask them if, as of January or December first or second, they can go ahead and give me interest so I can get paid off earlier this year. So, whatever I don't spend is going to stay in Rainy Day. I just rounded it to forty thousand, but at this point, I don't know. It's not going to be that much. I don't anticipate it being over thirty-five thousand. I just kind of picked a figure, really. So, but I am going to try to get it paid off early because our advance draw was really big this year. So, I've got the money to go ahead and pay it off. I have to wait for this to come back for the state approval, but I'm going to call the bank and have them give me a figure for the second of December, and hopefully, it'll be enough. Last year, I paid it December the nineteenth. So, I can save, you know, seventeen days worth of interest. It'll be worth it.
When is our advance draw so much larger?
Because she either, we always try to do the advance around the same figure, and I was either going to have to take a lot lower figure or a higher figure. And so we took the higher figure. Not that collections were worse, just bookkeeping-wise on the cutoff day of these. I was either going to have to take less than I did last December, or the next posting made it a lot more, so.
I would like to point out that if you do the numbers, and as hard as Chris and his predecessors work, and as hard as I'm trying to accomplish balanced budget, we'll say, and increase the general fund working or operating balance, it's going to be impossible to not borrow money, ever. We'd have to have, what, nine billion operating balance?
Well, we'd need to start the year with at least six.
Six. And we're working at four right now, trying to hold it at four, so it's going to be real tough.
We started this year with two million three, I think, is what we started the year with. So I'm hoping next year, and we're going to talk about borrowing here later, but I really don't think we're going to have to borrow as much next year.
Well, that's our goal. And just the thing we just did with EMS and that overtime, we chopped it down a little bit. We're chomping at it again for 2018 to where it's, we're trying to get full appropriations in all these departments. And I hate to take your time, but to commend everyone, we've had very little new appropriations or money taken from the general fund this year. And that's, you know, the answer, if we can live within our budgets.
Yeah.
So, just a time to say thanks again.
Well, I was hoping our increased advance was due to the treasurer's office staying open all the time. And I do appreciate that. And I'm sure the public appreciates it. That's not funny.
I'm sorry. He's smiling, so I'm smiling with it.
I do appreciate him being there to serve the public every day.
Hello, Jane. Thank you. Sorry to laugh, but sometimes I get tickled when I should. Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Madschek?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Yes.
Okay. We need the famous motion.
No, not-
Not yet. Oh, no, we're going to do-
Transfer agenda.
Sorry, sorry. Not quite halfway there.
Don't quit there.
Transfer agenda, coroner's office, one ninety-eight part-time, plus two thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Two forty-one evidence bags, minus five hundred. Three twenty-four pagers, minus seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. Three sixty-one equipment repairs, minus three hundred dollars. Three ninety-one association dues, minus five hundred dollars. Three ninety-two education, minus one hundred and fifty dollars. Three ninety-three forensic science meeting, minus one hundred and fifty dollars. Total request, zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
By Larry, second by Scott. This was approved by the Finance Committee. Roll call, please.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Madschek?
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Yes.
Jane, each board, two eleven. Office supplies, plus three hundred. Three twenty-two publications, minus three hundred. Total request, zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Jane, second by Scott. This was approved by the Finance Committee. Roll call.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Madschek?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Yes.
EMS, D one twenty-five, minus seven thousand four fifty-three sixty-four. E one twenty-five, plus seven thousand four fifty-three sixty-four. Total request, zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
By Scott, second by Jessica. This is a change of employee. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Madschek?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Yes.
Jail, one fifty-two corporal, minus three thousand eight eleven. A, one fifty-two corporal, plus three thousand eight eleven. B, one fifty-three correctional officer, minus three thousand three twenty-nine. C, one fifty-three correctional officer, plus three thousand three twenty-nine. One ninety-five training, minus twenty thousand. One ninety-seven overtime, plus twenty thousand. Total request, zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
By Scott, second by Jessica. This was a written notice positive by the Finance Committee. Roll call.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Madschek?
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush.
Yes.
Public Defender's Office, one eighty-six attorney fees, plus three thousand. Three thirteen psychological testing, minus three thousand. Total request, zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Scott, second by Larry. This is money to pay lawyers who had to work on cases that were appealed. They automatically get paid a stipend for that. Roll call. Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush.
Yes.
The next one for the shares withdrawn, you guys did that last month's meeting. The next one, share of two twenty-one gas, minus five thousand. One ninety-eight part-time, plus five thousand. Total request, zero.
We're going to do the next one. Is that all right?
Yeah, might as well.
Good, right, yeah.
Two twenty-one gas, minus fifteen thousand. Two twenty-three vehicle maintenance, plus fifteen thousand. Total request, zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Scott, second by Jessica. This was approved by the Finance Committee. Roll call, please. Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush.
Yes.
Treasurer, two eleven. Office supplies, plus twenty-two hundred. Three twelve bank fees, minus seventy-five hundred. Three twenty-five printing, minus thirty-five hundred. Four forty-one chairs and computers, plus eight thousand, eight hundred. Total request, zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move by Jane, second by Scott. This was approved by the Finance Committee. Thank you, Mr. Treasurer, for using your funds to improve your office. Roll call, please. Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush.
Yes.
Highway, one forty-two, minus three thousand, five forty-nine, sixty. A one forty-two, plus three thousand, five forty-nine, sixty. One twenty-eight, minus three thousand, seven seventy-two, eighty. A one twenty-eight, plus three thousand, seven seventy-two, eighty. Total request, zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Scott, second by Jessica. This was also given a positive recommendation from the Finance Committee. Roll call, please. Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush.
Yes.
Fair Board, one seventy-three health insurance, plus two hundred and twenty dollars. Three seventy prizes and awards, and minus two hundred and twenty dollars. Total request, zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Scott, second by Jessica. Roll call. Ms. Chambers.
Yeah.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush.
Yes.
While we're on that, I'd just like to point out that Fair Board has been working, trying to solve a problem with their one position at the Fair Board, Fairgrounds, and the health insurance dilemma. And we had a discussion sort of after the Finance Committee meeting, and we're getting that resolved with an amendment of the Commissioners' ordinance. Mr. Brook said this morning he would work on that with Mrs. Patterson. So, you'll know that's a big take care of.
Community Corrections, one seventy-one FICA, minus three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty cents. One ninety-nine longevity, plus three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty cents. Total request, zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Scott, second by Jessica. Roll call, please. Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush.
Yes.
You have an addendum? I want to do them together. They're both new, for new hires.
Good, fine with me.
Nine one one, A one oh three, minus one thousand, four twenty-one, seventy-five. B one oh three, plus one thousand, four twenty-one, seventy-five. Prosecutor, A one oh two. Deputy prosecutor, minus four thousand, four thirty, seventy-four. B one oh two, deputy prosecutor, plus four thousand, four thirty, seventy-four.
Move to approve.
Second.
These were both endorsed by the Finance Committee. Roll call, please. Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush.
Yes.
Now, all right.
I will move to approve the financial transfers and amend the salary quarters with length reductions. Now, we need to do that as amended? On some of those?
You do anyway.
At this point, I'll remember some.
Amending everything we did amended, yeah.
Yeah.
One second.
Okay, that's Scott and Jessica. Questions? Roll call, please. Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush.
Yes.
Okay, tax payment. If there's anything coming up. Appointments, I'm, we started doing some homework on next year's appointments. The only change I have right now, as far as liaisons of council members to other boards, is Scott is the liaison to the sheriff now instead of the road crew. Anyone else would like to be changed or are happy with a lot, otherwise, on the table, I'll submit that as it is. I've got a few to call yet, still, I haven't tried to call anybody yet. I've reviewed all those that are pending, and I'm going to call the people that are on various boards that expired this year. I talked to the, Mr. Pierce, that's on the Housing Authority, that we've had a bit of a problem with his attending meetings in the past. I called him, and he's going to send me a letter saying that he would, he's just so busy, and I saw where he was, and so that that will probably be replaced by someone for the balance of his term of one year. And that's all I have on appointments. Personnel, have anything? Personnel, not here. I guess so. We have an ordinance coming up. This is kind of the auditor's ordinance, but it goes along with what Mrs. Patterson was talking about a little while ago. It's the authorization of the auditor to borrow money.
Yeah, this is the first step in the process, to have council approve of.
Mr. Hughes has read the ordinance and sent me a note. Go ahead and tell me if you're... He said it was in order, so we need a number for it.
It's two thousand seventeen, zero, three, three. Well, if you approve today, it's going to speed up the process, but it can have a first reading today and a second if you're...
I'll move for approval of ordinance twenty seventeen dash zero, three, three.
Second by Larry, second by Scott. Roll call.
Approval or disapproval?
Well, we have to approve, approve, sure, the first reading, first read.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot. I was waiting on...
Put your hat on here, darling.
Mr. Alexander.
Where are we? Oh, we're, okay, yes.
Who are you?
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush.
Yes.
Due to the fact that this is an annual event, that I think everyone in the general public is aware of, I would recommend we make a motion to suspend rules.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules, ordinance twenty seventeen dash zero.
Post by Larry.
Second.
Second by Scott. Roll call.
So, Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush. Oh, sorry, Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush.
Yes.
I'll move for approval of ordinance number twenty seventeen dash zero.
Second.
Move to approve of ordinance twenty seventeen, oh, thirty-three. Second reading. Roll call.
I don't know. Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for being diligent, keeping an extra, and the auditor's, he's never given me an exact answer, but he has been trying to keep this rate of interest down. I know he, he goes down some, but I don't exactly know.
And also, for next year, Ed's still here. Correct me if I'm wrong, but Steve told me that Ed's been talking to, we haven't been able to get anybody bid the last two years besides Starbake. That's it. Nobody would bid, not even attempt to bid. Steve said that Ed's been working on it, and we're, you think we have a few people that will try to bid next year?
Yeah, we have at least five or six.
Hopefully, we'll have some competition there and get some great young people harder, but like I said, last few years, if it, if it were for Starbake, I don't know what we would have done. That's pretty much it, that's it, so. I mean, Steve has called all the banks, he sends letters, and we couldn't get anybody to respond, even though they're holding their money, so. Maybe this year, it'll be even better.
How are you doing on the bank rates on the ordinance where we allowed you to put notes out that long-term?
We're in the process of remuneration of those right now. Okay, we've finally got all those received.
Okay. Very good. Okay, that's good. Public Defender's reimbursement, third quarter, I guess we'll just let anybody and everybody know if you want to see that. It's, it's at the auditor's office if they need it, you want to comment on it?
Hi, Shelley Harvey, Office Manager, Public Defender's Office. This is our basically quarterly report that we make to the state so that we can reimburse the funds back to the county. I've been told by the state that everything's good. I had the help of the former office manager to complete this, since this was due about three weeks after I started my job. So, the state thinks everything looks good, and I don't know if we've received the money yet or not to disburse, but that's where we're at. And there was a comment made at Finance Committee that you would like to see more, some of you would like to see more of the numbers as far as the attorneys and what they have case-wise and things like that. And I assure that if anybody wants to see that, it's available now, and that I will include it in future reports.
Is that something you can email to us?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Just to point out, Shelley moved over from a court administrative job, and, and we talked a bit at Finance, and she said she was enjoying her job, and that's great, because we've had a little bit of turnover in there last year or so, and we're glad you enjoyed it. Hope you'll stick around.
I hope so, too. I hope they'll keep me.
Very good.
She was trained in peace and justice.
Yes, he can mention that, because it's a fact.
That's good, that's real good, yeah.
Any questions?
Well, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Great cause. I don't have any remorse, and I ask Mr. Hughes, do you want to continue as our attorney for next year?
I'd be honored.
Okay, thank you. And your contract is such that it has a continuance clause in it, am I right?
Yes.
So, all I have to do is ask for both the confidence and ready to go. We'll do that on the tenth.
I just said, told her, you like him.
He's done us a very good job and worked hard for us, and always there when the ladies in the auditor's office need it, even. We appreciate that.
We don't try to bother you too much, but we don't have to wait when we do. We appreciate that. Ron, I have a couple of things. I cut this out of yesterday's paper, where Evansville's having the same jail problem that we are having. This must have been a busy day in Evansville, because I cut this out. Changing what company runs the city and county boys clinic, will save a million point one over the next three years. And I'll forward that on to the HR. Just for information. And HR's not here, but when I was looking over the, Gail's here, and I bet she can answer my question. When I was looking over the reimbursements for the health, last month's was a lot bigger than we have. Can you explain that? Did anybody else notice that? Come on down. Figure if you do. Does it come through? Yeah. Did somebody else notice that?
Yes.
Yeah.
You'll have to give the speaker, because I can't carry it.
Yes, we did notice, and we inquired about that to Human Resources, and they said it was just a reimbursement that we should apply, so we did.
But it is ours.
For now.
We haven't paid it back yet.
Excuse me?
We haven't paid it back yet.
Uh-uh. We haven't been asked to pay it back.
I knew when I was at school, that was the, when we were talking about it, I thought they already did. So, there is a chance we will have to pay it back?
What's, who's the reimbursement problem?
Interest.
Yeah, it's, it's an interest, but it's not, I mean, it's, I can't tell you right now.
The way you look at, at our monthly reimbursement, there's the expenses and the reimbursements, and then there's the total. Last month was, how much more was it? I don't remember how much more it was, but it caught my attention.
It was considerably bigger, and that's why I inquired about it, and Human Resource said that they also inquired, and that rewards the deposit and the interest on it, so that's what we did.
Be kind of nice to know that. I would comment on that article Jane has, it looks like they're having the same problem in that county we're having here, is overcrowding, but they're talking about using their public safety lit, I guess it's called now, imposing another income tax to cover the cost of possible additional charges. But one of the things in there that caught my eye that's always bothered me, and I'll go clear back to the 1981, when I came in as the Commissioner, the state was reimbursing the counties $35 a day for housing inmates that were, for one reason or another, state responsibility. They're still reimbursing us for $35 a day, this many years later. They've never upped any one penny to the local jails. I looked over a period of time with inflation itself, how many dollars that would be if the state, state being our legislators, would just give us a break and pay for what they're getting. I guess we could make special cells that didn't have any facilities or anything in them, because they were paying the low rate. I don't know, but it's, it's not, it's interesting. I've lost a lot of faith in my state legislators.
You mean both?
I've tried my best to converse with them about some of the problems we have, and I've never gotten a positive answer.
I have not either. I wanna comment on that. None of them wanna address the local government issues and how they can help, nor let alone do a study or any kind of summer studies, or get over here and give people that serve government a phone call to see what's going on. And there's absolutely no legislation at all, really, in my opinion, over there. The last couple of years has done anything for us. Some of the stuff that they do talk about is irrelevant.
Yeah, all those kids and things we get about scholarships, or interns, or this going on.
Yeah, and I'm gonna pump a little bit on the LRS and MBH funds. This last tax increase, only 30% of totals, when they are allowed to put 70% into the county general fund or the state general fund to 2025. It, in the past, they've never given the counties all 100% of the LRS, MBH funds. So then they wanted to increase the gas tax another last year with, if you read the House bill on that, there's 14-something percent goes in LRS and another 14% goes in MBH, and they're allowed to use the other 75%, 70% into the general fund or whatever they want to until 2025.
Wow.
Wait, watch, and listen, they'll change that somewhere where they'll have some sort of smoke issue that nobody's paying attention about, they're looking at that, and they'll slide and renew that. If they'd just give us 100% of the money, is what the money's entitled to, what it's collected for, we wouldn't have these beat-up roads in the state of Indiana. Okay, I'm Venned over.
It's good.
If I could go on about this.
Well, you know, and you're, it's why we're here. I mean, that's why we, a lot of people think we run for office for our ego, but we run because we wanna be involved and have an effect, and when you hit your head up against a wall, I'm glad you pumped up, I can sense that. Anyone else? Mary, you've been pretty quiet today. You wanna spout off anything?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Ron, you need to, I guess, ask around and set a date for the special meeting in December.
We need to talk about, what's a date for the Ted Bowman annual? Pete's up here, and I guess this'll be the last one with Pete. What kind of a date do we need here? Scott's volunteered to make the reservation and follow up with Ted if we can give him a date. Any ideas?
In the past, he's always just had a couple days out of the week that he would, he could accommodate us, so we might have to call and see what days he's got. Remember, it seemed like it was either Tuesday or Thursday.
Yeah, definitely during the week's gonna be easier to get than anything else, so.
Monday, Wednesday, it seemed like he couldn't do it, but something along.
Okay, if you like, I'll make that phone call and throw a date out there, and hopefully it'll work for everybody, and.
Mary, I will not be different. I'll send you my address, and you can present some of your fudge. What'd you say, Jane?
I get your fudge. Yeah, oh, yeah.
What's Jane doing fudge?
Mary's fudge.
I think the rule is you must be presenting fudge.
That's right. We'll see if you want. No, Donna will.
Put it in an envelope, mom.
No, we won't, Jane. Well, I am heading south tomorrow in December. We only have transfers, so I know that will be a problem, but I will be back in January, and I will be back in February, so I will be here in January, February. My plan.
My plan.
Or you pay for Maryland, too.
Okay, so you're gonna get back with a date?
Yeah, yeah, I'll check it out, see when they got some.
It'll be Tuesday or Thursday. I got a date on Christmas.
14, you got one on Christmas.
So if y'all make it up.
Okay. Anyone else?
Just combine it.
We're gonna be in New York.
Motion to adjourn. Everybody to move. All those in favor, say aye. Close, say a no.
Ron, make sure and get those.
All right.